It's a well organized machine here. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the 2012 City Council inaugural ceremony. At this time, are we going to hear from the windows ensemble or are we going to do the color?
We're going to do the color.
Alright. Great. We have two different schedules here. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the presentation of the colors.
Center, face. Present, port. Order, port. Center, face. Forward, port.
Please be seated and let's give our color guard a round of applause. I'm thrilled and excited to be here for this inaugural ceremony for the council. For the new members, I'm extremely excited to welcome council members Brenn Owen and Tolbert to the ranks of St. Paul City Council members. It was a few years ago, okay, 15, when I stood on this stage with two small children and my wife Connie and raised my hand to take an oath of office. I still remember it like it was yesterday. And I believed at the time that I could change the world. But after a while and you're on the council and you go through some of the battles and you look back and you reflect and you realize you actually can. So I hope our council members, some of you that have become, you know, you've been around for a while, some of you are on your second terms, some of you are fresh faces. Don't ever forget that you can change the world from your little corner of it. And it's an important corner, this beautiful city that we call home. This beautiful city on the banks of the Mississippi River. That we love, that we cherish, and that we pledge today to do our best for. These are tough times, unbelievably difficult times. If someone had told me six years ago, when I raised my hand to take the oath of office to be mayor, that I would be experiencing six of the worst years economically in the history of this country, I think I might have run and hid. But instead, we all stood together, we worked together, and we fought the fight. We met the challenge and St. Paul is stronger because of it. We're moving forward on light rail. We're moving forward on new projects that will bring new people to downtown St. Paul and across the city. We're working on an education agenda that will transform how we reach our children, how we close the achievement gap, and how we move forward into the 21st century together. Where all of our children and all of our families are doing better. We do this work because we have a passion for the city. We do this work because we believe in the future greatness of St. Paul. It's easy sometimes to get jaded. It's easy sometimes to get frustrated. And it's easy sometimes to think that the world's problems make it impossible for us to do what we need to do. But never forget what we can accomplish together. Never forget what we have accomplished. Never forget the oath that you take today to do your best, to honor and to cherish this beautiful city on the banks of the river. It's a wonderful and tremendous honor that we have here today, folks. It's a wonderful group of folks that I am pleased to be able to call my colleagues. We'll work together, we'll fight some fights, we won't always agree. But we will always agree on one thing, St. Paul is our home. We love it dearly and we will always do our best for it. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Coleman. My name is Kathy Lantry and I am president of the St. Paul City Council. And I want to thank you all for being here today. You are friends, family, colleagues, but most importantly, you are here to celebrate with us. We appreciate your support as we undertake this next term as St. Paul City Council members. We all recognize that being elected to office marks a milestone in our lives. For some of us who have been through a few elections, the inaugural ceremony is like old hat. For others who take their oath for the very first time this morning, this ceremony will undoubtedly hold special excitement. And I hope that our newest colleagues will take the opportunity to savor every second of this very special day. Excuse me, for all of us, the words we speak as we take the oath of office remind us of our duty to those who have elected us and the challenges and promises that lie ahead. We begin 2012 with a great sense of hope for the city we all love. Of course, there are the things we always worry about, public safety, neighborhood development, business growth, and the things that we, that challenge us that have become routine. Mid-year cuts by the state, hiring freezes. And we're also challenged by things we can't ever anticipate. Nine snow emergencies in one season, the Emerald Ash Bore. However, our challenges are far outweighed by the great opportunities that lie ahead in St. Paul. The development of a thriving business center at Beacon Bluff. The beginnings of a new neighborhood at the former Ford Plant. Artists living and working at the former Schmidt Brewery. And of course, our greatest opportunity of all, the promise of Central Corridor. Each of these visions point toward a bright future for the city of St. Paul. A future that each of the council members, working in partnership with their peers and the mayor, will help nurture and guide. Today's inauguration brings a new dynamic, excuse me, to our little septet. There are three of us, Dan Bostrom, Dave Thune, and I, that have 46 years of combined experience on the city council. This experience can be helpful, but the perspective of our newer and newest members bring to the table will be invaluable as we confront both our challenges and our opportunities. To our newest colleagues, Amy and Chris, we hope you come to know us well and appreciate what each member brings to the council table. We hope you recognize the value of Dan Bostrom's quiet authority. Dave Thune's powerful advocacy for his neighborhoods. Russ Stark's even-handed, pragmatic and practical approach. Melvin Carter's passion for doing everything possible for the kids in our city. And hopefully, a bit of my wish for being organized, excuse me, and well-prepared. We also hope that you come to appreciate the mayor's sharp intelligence and keen sense of humor. In the next four years... What? Do I mean that? What? Oh, did I say clean sense of humor? Which, that, no. I meant, I did, I wrote keen, so, but either one is fine. You do what you need to do. Okay. In the next four years, we hope to learn from you as well, as each of you brings your own talents to our group. What we know about you already is that you have a very strong work ethic and that you connect with people. These talents will serve you well in the next four years. Being a city council person isn't rocket science, but it does take a particular set of skills that are critical to our success. We have to be open to learning alternative options and ideas and to learn to work together to do what is best for the city we all love. As we each take the oath of office this morning, we are making a promise to the people of the city of St. Paul to confront any challenges we face and to capitalize on the opportunities that lie ahead. Working together, we will guide the future of our city and ensure that it remains a strong and vibrant and wonderful place to live and work. But before we take the oath, we have a special treat today. We have invited Pearl Warren to give us some reflections. Pearl was born in Chicago but has lived in the city of Minneapolis and we invited her anyway since the age of four. She found her love for poetry in the fourth grade and has been writing ever since. In 1993, Pearl earned the National Foundation for Teaching Entrepreneurship Award of Minnesota, sponsored by Coke Refinery, as the young owner of her own African-American greeting card company BlackBerry Graphics. She was given Congressional recognition from Congressman Jim Rabsted and the late Senator Paul Wellstone for her accomplishments. The desire to perform and share her thoughts with the public through spoken word has grown over the years. Please welcome Pearl Warren.
Good morning, beautiful people. The piece that I'm going to share with you today is a piece that I just, I just wrote this piece for this occasion. It's called "Ruling Powers of This Nation: Will You Give Us Justice Now?" "Ruling Powers of This Nation: Will You Give Us Justice Now?" "We've come to a new place in a new year, to restore hope and deplete fear, to renew our faith in leadership, regardless of your denomination of politics. We have come to a place to be diligent, to stand up and be accountable for our constructional rights, to build a community that is prepared for the good fight. We've been known as a state of production." Come on, y'all, Minnesota, I thought you knew. "The original home of Kemp's, Green Giant, General Mills, Spam, Greyhound, and Control Data, just to name a few. We stand at the top of the map, at the beginning of the Mississippi, surrounded by over 10,000 lakes. Our expansion elasticity, this mission is not a mistake. We stand tall for all. Let our leadership be an example of productivity, of how to run a city and exemplify a community. Let us embrace one another in this melting pot, regardless to our race, creed, sexual orientation, or color, for we are all sisters and brothers. We've created a mixture of spices that will weather any storm. And we know whose side they're on because they stand with us. For there is no city council without a city, and there is no council without an outfit befitting. "Ruling Powers of This Nation: Will You Give Us Justice Now?" "Will you lead by example proficient and profound, allowing the words that are uttered from your mouth to be an extension of us, ensuring that what is lawful and just complements our collaborative design? Placing your ears to the streets of our community. Don't watch, pay close attention. Answer the unjust cries of the community educators and students alike with a sense of urgency. Speak forever for the needs of the people for it's constituted that we are all created equal. Fluent and congruent, harmonious and prosperous, innovative and motivators, with a drum major instinct. Speak life to our young creators. Minneapolis, St. Paul, and every surrounding city reflects us all. We are not separate from any part or any problem that it presents. "Ruling Powers of This Nation: Will You Give Us Justice Now?" "Will you enforce equal employment opportunities to help us create financial stability in our communities so that we can grow and thrive as a city and help Minnesota at the top of the map stand bold and pretty? Lead us through right counsel and engagement so when issues arrive, we stand together to defend it. This is a fair exchange for the stroke of an ink pen, signing your name for the position that you're in. Let the flowing waters birth promise of this state and our condition always be of good taste, that it speaks to every race and every hand that we embrace. That we counsel poor leadership, because maybe they forgot who they represent. Maybe we've been passive in the past and maybe some bad choices have been had, but for the love of the people and the uplifting of us. "Ruling Powers of This Nation: Will You Give Us Justice Now?" "You've given yourself to service, a position in the community. To the people, to the state, let mathematics define us. Let us be the product and the solution. Let us become Minnesota. Let it not just be a place of residency, but a place of ownership. Representing the building and the preservation of not one but all. For we will stratify together. We are the class of 2012, studious. We represent the wealth of our state, our government, our leadership, our educational system, and our production. Right counsel and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, no pressure there. So, now the part we've all been waiting for. To administer the oath of office, we have asked Chief Judge Kathleen Guerin. Chief Guerin was first elected to the Second Judicial District in 1987 and has been its chief judge since 2008. Prior to her election, she served as a prosecuting attorney for the Ramsey County Attorney's Office and a social studies teacher in the St. Paul School District. Please welcome Chief Judge Guerin.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here on this important date for all of our council people and for all of the people of the city of St. Paul. Besides being your chief judge for the entire district which is Ramsey County, I live in St. Paul. And was born at St. Joseph's Hospital, as was my father. So, let's start with the Honorable Melvin Carter III, Ward 1. Where's the photographer? Where'd you do him? I don't want to have you here. I don't know where the photographer is. How about that? You're gonna help with this now. You're gonna hold the Bible first. For your daddy. Okay, we'll see ya. Okay. There we go. Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. "I, Melvin Carter III..."
"I, Melvin Carter III..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...to support the constitutions..."
"To support the constitutions..."
"...of the United States of America..."
"Of the United States of America..."
"...and of the state of Minnesota..."
"And of the state of Minnesota..."
"...and that I would discharge faithfully..."
"And that I would discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties devolving upon me..."
"The duties devolving upon me..."
"...as a city council member..."
"As a city council member..."
"...of the city of St. Paul..."
"Of the city of St. Paul..."
"...to the best of my judgment..."
"To the best of my judgment..."
"...and ability..."
"And ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
You did a great job. Next, Dave Thune. Who is my councilperson, actually?
Oh, the five holes.
Pardon? Noticeable. You wanna come over here? Looks like a family Bible, Dave.
My mother.
All right, how you do it? Do you want to raise your hand on the Bible and raise your right hand? Repeat after me. "I, Dave Thune..."
"I, Dave Thune..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...to support the constitutions..."
"Support the constitution..."
"...of the United States of America..."
"Of the United States of America..."
"...and of the state of Minnesota..."
"And of the state of Minnesota..."
"...and that I would discharge faithfully..."
"That I would discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties devolving upon me..."
"The duties devolving upon me..."
"...as a city council member..."
"As a city council member..."
"...of the city of St. Paul..."
"Of the city of St. Paul..."
"...to the best of my judgment..."
"To the best of my judgment..."
"...and ability..."
"And ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Next, Christopher Tolbert. While they're all special, I gave Chris his first job as a lawyer. And I also taught him as a student in law school. Hold the Bible, please. And Chris, would you raise your right hand? Do you want Chris or Christopher? Is he able? All right. Repeat after me. "I, Christopher Tolbert..."
"I, Christopher Tolbert..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...to support the constitutions..."
"To support the constitutions..."
"...of the United States of America..."
"Of the United States of America..."
"...and of the state of Minnesota..."
"And of the state of Minnesota..."
"...and that I would discharge faithfully..."
"And that I would discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties devolving upon me..."
"The duties devolving upon me..."
"...as a city council member..."
"As a city council member..."
"...of the city of St. Paul..."
"Of the city of St. Paul..."
"...to the best of my judgment..."
"To the best of my judgment..."
"...and ability..."
"And ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Russ Stark, Ward 4. Raise your right hand.
"I, Russ Stark..."
"I, Russ Stark..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"I do solemnly swear..."
"...to support the constitutions..."
"To support the constitutions..."
"...of the United States of America..."
"Of the United States of America..."
"...and of the state of Minnesota..."
"And of the state of Minnesota..."
"...and that I would discharge faithfully..."
"And that I would discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties devolving upon me..."
"The duties devolving upon me..."
"...as a city council member..."
"As a city council member..."
"...of the city of St. Paul..."
"Of the city of St. Paul..."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability..."
"To the best of my judgment and ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, Russ. Another first time, Ward 5, Amy Brennborn. All right. Repeat after me. "I, Amy Brennborn..."
"I, Amy Brennborn..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...to support the constitutions..."
"To support the constitutions..."
"...of the United States of America..."
"Of the United States of America..."
"...and of the state of Minnesota..."
"And of the state of Minnesota..."
"...and that I would discharge faithfully..."
"And that I would discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties devolving upon me..."
"The duties devolving upon me..."
"...as a city council member..."
"As a city council member..."
"...of the city of St. Paul..."
"Of the city of St. Paul..."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability..."
"To the best of my judgment and ability..."
"...so help me God..." Congratulations. Good work, guys. Ward 6, Dan Bostrom. Guess I've known you since you were a young police officer and I was a young prosecutor.
That was just a few years.
It's a long time ago. The security detail, all right. Raise your right hand.
"I, Dan Bostrom..."
"I, Dan Bostrom..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...to support the constitutions..."
"To support the constitution..."
"...of the United States of America..."
"Of the United States of America..."
"...and of the state of Minnesota..."
"And of the state of Minnesota..."
"...and that I would discharge faithfully..."
"And that I will discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties devolving upon me..."
"The duties devolving upon me..."
"...as a city council member..."
"As a city council member..."
"...of the city of St. Paul..."
"Of the city of St. Paul..."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability..."
"To the best of my judgment and ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Gotcha. Nobody done it that long. Ward 7, Kathy Lantry.
"I, Kathy Lantry..."
"I, Kathy Lantry..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...to support the constitutions..."
"To support the constitutions..."
"...of the United States of America..."
"Of the United States of America..."
"...and of the state of Minnesota..."
"And of the state of Minnesota..."
"...and that I would discharge faithfully..."
"And that I would discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties devolving upon me..."
"The duties devolving upon me..."
"...as a city council member..."
"As a city council member..."
"...of the city of St. Paul..."
"Of the city of St. Paul..."
"...to the best of my judgment..."
"To the best of my judgment..."
"...and ability..."
"And ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Sam. Good.
Let's do one more round of applause for the 2012 City Council. The votes have been tabulated. Melvin's kids win the cutest. But having Pearl here was just wonderful. And all of the family members, I want to congratulate all of you. And interesting roads ahead for all of you that are new to the council, but support your family members, support what they do. You know, I'm frequently introduced as the person who needs no introduction, and of course, people go on to introduce this long, lengthy introduction. And so I get the pleasure of saying this next, our next guest has no need for introduction, and yet I will introduce her, because a city that has no art has no heart. If you look at some of the great things that have been accomplished over the last six years, the revitalization of the Jazz Fest and the music scene in downtown St. Paul, the real kind of setting of a home for the artist community, I really trace the beginnings of that to the wise decision that I was, that I made early on at the behest of many people to appoint Carol Connolly as our poet laureate. She has stood by us, she has blessed us with her talent, she has made us laugh, made us cry, certainly made us think, that's what poets are supposed to do. And I'm sure she will do her magic today, Carol Connolly.
Poem for the City of St. Paul City Council Inauguration. "The new year with its dependable timing, its greeting full of bells and whistles and promises has arrived. We watch with admiration the skaters of every age and bent, who with a fearless and powerful glide wind reliably round our downtown rink on ice as new as the future. In the park, thousands of tiny lights burn bright, day and night Scott Fitzgerald stands watch, and we welcome a duo of new talent, Amy Brenmoen and Chris Tolbert. They stand on the cusp of their city council service. We bow to five council stalwarts, Kathy Lantry, Dan Bostrom, Dave Thune, Melvin Carter, Russ Stark, who have long served us well. Their history is one of accomplishment enhanced with the trademarks of reliable respect..." Don't you hate that when you blow a word? "Their history is one of accomplishment enhanced with the trademarks of reliable respect for equality and justice for every single one of us. They guard the diversity and strength of their neighborhoods with reverence and never lose sight of our shared history. Still, the budget looms. The old notion of no new taxes and the billions spent weekly on endless wars threaten to strangle compassion. Our city leaders say no. They will do what must be done to bring us into a future safe and brilliant with progress our ancestors could never have imagined. Soon, we will bow to those who came before us and suit up to mark the 126th Winter Carnival. Today, we bow only to our inaugurated. They lead us into this new year with faith in the future of our beloved city, St. Paul."
Thank you so much, Carol. She wrote that just for us today, so we feel especially honored. Before we conclude today, I'd like to take the time to thank Mayor Coleman for being here. It's really an important partner as we move forward for 2012. Of course, Carol Connolly, the Police and Fire Honor Guards, the Capital City Wind Ensemble, Judge Guerin, Pearl Warren, thank you so much for taking the time to be with us today. We'd also like to thank our event sponsors who helped make this ceremony and the inaugural ball on Friday possible. We are truly grateful for their support. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out the incredible work of the folks who put this all together. The inaugural committee who has worked so hard to pull this off despite the few hitches. Their work, of course, was perfect. It was those of us who have to execute it, not so much. But for sure, we want to stop and thank Trudy Maloney, Sheri Moore, Carol Novak, Nia Vang, and especially Ellen Bialis for their very, very hard work to get us through today. So, thank you to them. And this concludes the formal part of our ceremony this morning, and we hope that you will join the new council for refreshments immediately following the conclusion in the foyer outside in the McKnight Theater. And we also hope that you can join us for the inaugural ball on Friday evening from 7:00 to midnight at the Crown Plaza. And thank you again for coming today, and we appreciate your support going forward. Thank you very much.